We're in good shape on that. All right. All right, let's go, Azrael. Ready?
And we are recording.
Right. Good morning, everyone. I welcome you to this regular meeting in May of the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees. We're meeting remotely via Zoom due to the COVID-19 pandemic. But the system is functioning well and the board is engaged and working hard. So at this time, we'll recognize Pastor Steve Walters of the Church of Pike Road, who will be giving our invocation and a word of encouragement to us. Pastor Walters.
Yes, I'm, I just want to start by saying how thankful I am for your heart to serve and especially as we walk through this pandemic. And I, I thought that even this morning, as I began to just ponder, perhaps some of the things that maybe God is wanting to share with us in the midst of difficulty and challenge. And one of the things that strikes me is his desire to always hear from us. And so I'm privileged to pray. And I also thought, what is it he wants to hear? And I was reading through Psalm 51, and I just thought I would share that with you before we pray, because it appears that one of the things that God seems to want the most from us is a sense of spiritual brokenness. It's this heart that knows that as far as anything spiritual is concerned, we really don't have much to offer, but rather he has everything to offer and much to give. And so I thought that if we offer our hearts to him, those who are really even poor in spirit, as the Sermon on the Mount begins with, that these words might give you some, some idea of maybe the posture he wants from us. And so let me read to you, it's in Psalm chapter 51. And it's right after he is beginning to confess sin to God. And, and he already talked a bit about some of the things that he'd done. This is David. In fact, it's written that this is shortly after he had sinned with that Shiva. So he says this, he said, "Lord, open my lips and my mouth will declare your praise. You do not want a sacrifice, for I would give it. You're not pleased with a burnt offering. The sacrifice pleasing to God is a broken spirit, because you will not despise a broken and humbled heart, God." And so I thought I would just share that with you and, and then just maybe even encourage you a bit that, that he would. I think God is just more than willing to hear our prayer and hear our plea as the one who holds all the cards, so to speak. So if you join me in a moment of prayer, I'd like to just invite him to, to preside, if you will. So let's pray together. Father God, we give you thanks for your grace in times of need. We give you thanks for this community college system and, and these men and women who steward it. We give you thanks for the educators and administrators in Alabama who labor in such a great cause. We ask for your blessing and wisdom to mark today's meeting, bringing tangible accomplishment through all that's done here. And give them the opportunity to equip and nurture others so that they might be able to spread and share hope, the kind of hope that's often given through education, hope for a brighter future for everyone. Fathers, we seek to navigate the current threat of the health of our people. We just pause as broken people to find mercy and healing from your hands. Sustain the families represented here on this board. Bend hurting hearts, heal ailing bodies, and enrich our busy minds with the focus and wisdom you provide. We petition for much needed relief for the people of our state and our world. And we remain ever mindful of your provision and ever grateful of your grace as we serve in good faith. Bring blessing on this board today and in the months ahead. We pray these things in Christ's name. Amen. Well, it's, it's been a joy just interceding and praying with you all. And, and I suppose I'll leave all this work to you. Thank you so much for your service.
Walters, thank you so much for taking your, some of your valuable time today to give us that encouraging word and prayer. And we appreciate you and wish, wish you well and your family and your community of worship there at the Church of Pike Road. All the best. Thank you again.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
And at this time, we'll have our pledge. And Susan Foy, our trustee from Alexandria City, will lead us in the pledge.
Okay. Everybody want to stand up? Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Foy. Next item is roll call.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Mr. Al Thompson.
President.
Mr. John Mitchell.
President.
Ms. Susan Foy.
President.
Mr. Matthew Woods.
President.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
President.
Mr. Milton Davis. Mr. Chuck Smith. Mr. Blake McAnally.
President.
Mr. Jeffrey Newman.
President.
Governor Kay Ivey. Mr. Chairman, you have form.
Hi, Ms. Hively. Item four, is approval of past month's agenda. Our meeting that we met remotely and each board member's received this in advance and had a chance to review this. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods, there's been a motion and a second to approve the agenda, any discussion? Seeing known, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, we'll do a voice vote on this. All those in favor of the approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Out of five is the approval of the minutes of the April 8, 2020 meeting. Once again, the board members have received this in advance and have a chance to review these minutes of the last regular meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 8 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Foy. Any discussion? Seeing known, we'll move to a vote. We'll do a voice vote here at this time. All those in favor of approval of the minutes of the April 8, 2020 meeting signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. Ms. Hively, is anyone signed up for public comment?
No one has signed up for public comment.
Item seven, A1. Is a change order for Enterprise State for the Sessions Hall Project, Enterprise State Community College. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Smith, this has come straight to the work, to the meeting agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, due to time and the facilities and infrastructure committees had a thorough review of this.
Yes, sir. Our recommendation was to move it to the agenda for passage.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Discussion.
Mr. Thompson, I, I've got several questions about this. I questioned this on the call. I know Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Watley are tired of listening to me about this. But I think this change order is on the architectural firm. First of all, the, everybody should know that the president of Enterprise State Community College fired the first architect that came down there and messed this up. And second of all, how can, how can an architectural firm go in and look at a building built in 1965 and not check for asbestos? That's, that, that don't make sense to me. And okay, and Ed's point, which I, I agree with you, Ed, if it had been checked, you'd still have the abatement. But if you'd had it on the original bid, that might have been a lesser number. Was this $94,000 for hazardous material abatement? Was that bid or is that just an arbitrary figure the contractors come up with for $94,000 that the architect missed?
Mr. Mitchell, this is Ed Watley. That was a number that we got from the general contractor. Off the top of my head, I don't know how many firms engaged, but that would have been a subcontractor to this project. There would not have been an asbestos abatement prior to this.
This, this don't smell good to me, guys.
Comments from the board?
John, I agree with you. It's, it's something we've had a challenge with ever since we've been on this board, is making sure the presidents, facility committees, and the architects and everyone do a good scope on the going into the project. And as y'all heard me say, yeah, this leaves a bad taste in our mouth. And, but this isn't unique to enterprise. Unfortunately, I don't know how to get a grip on overseeing all of the actions of the schools and their architects without taking over the, the process.
I guess another question I would have, Ed, do we use this? We, we have, does the schools have a choice of the architectural firm? Or they just send somebody from some, some firm? Some, what's the name of the firm? It's three letters. I don't recall the name of the firm.
The, the firm is GMC. And GMC for this project was selected through the, the qualification process that the Alabama Building Commission recommends. We select architects based on qualifications. We, we select firms based on the qualification process. Once we have the firm selected, then the colleges work with that firm to determine the actual people that are assigned to the different projects.
Well, again, the first architect they sent down there, the only experience he had ever had was building baseball field or softball fields. He'd never had any building experience, according to the president.
Yes, sir. That person was, I believe, replaced with a more senior person from that firm.
Okay, and I'm jumping ahead, Al, to the next agenda item. But we're, we're thinking about purchasing a piece of property in Mobile. And it's all about an asbestos check and making sure that we're but yet we redo a building in 1965. They don't even count. He missed, he missed a pipe in a closet. You're an architect, you know? Matthew and I might miss that because we're car dealers. But you know, you don't miss that if you're an architect. I think, I don't, I, I, I think architects accountable here. I, I don't agree with this.
You sure make some good points, John. I mean, John, I, if, do, we, I'm sure we have a contract with these architects. Is there? I don't know, do we have any protection? It doesn't seem like we've had it in the past when they're, they make a mistake. We don't want to get, get in a position of litigating.
Typically, the best, the, the best recourse that we have with, with something of this nature is simply to take that into account when selecting future architects. In this particular case, the architectural firm, in their agreement with the college, does, does call the college to notify them of any asbestos containing material. And so I, I think that if we were to try to collect damages from the architecture firm, I think there would be a, a, a pretty good fight on that item. The best, the best thing we can do is simply not hire the firm for future work if we were, if we were that displeased with it.
John, just to share a thought with you. Back years ago, I was complaining when I was still working for a living about a contractor not doing his job. The engineering manager told me, it's not the architect's fault, it's yours. You're the one that selected him. You're the one that wrote the scope of work. So it's back on you. So, yeah, it got missed, but back to the point, it, it was our mistake for not addressing it with the architect up front or whoever was interacting on a daily basis with the architect. I don't know how we as board members can get into the day-to-day oversight of what goes on between the schools, the facilities manager, and the architects. We put out guidelines, but that's what they are, is guidelines. Open all suggestions, y'all.
Chuck, we can't get in day-to-day, but as we're, we're probably, it's going to be the, the result of, of, of also the other recommendation on this, this agenda. We're going to establish a policy on land acquisition and say, or discuss that anyway. And I, maybe there's something that can be addressed on this because this isn't the first time it's come up. It, it's maybe in a different form. And I, I think that these, and I'm just going to say the system or maybe some of the previous ones and, and, and the boards, part of that has been remiss and maybe not having a policy that could, I don't know, or to allow us to conduct some due diligence prior to executing a contract with an architectural firm. And it all comes down to negotiation. And, and as I've heard from time to time here in the last year or two, we have difficulty even getting people to bid on some of our jobs. I'm a little surprised because I see other jobs in our area being done by, I think, really good contractors. And they're, they're not as large as some of the jobs that we only get a, a one bid on or two bids on. This is, I'm opening up another conversation. And I don't know if there's a limit to who, if they have to be qualified by the state. Chuck, speak to this. Other people could. And there may be some really good contractors out there and they haven't been, they haven't jumped through the hoops or done what it takes to, to do state, state bidding or, or state jobs. Had a couple of instances come up here recently after the construction project at Coastal that ended up being, was mismanaged by the, by the, the previous administration there and the architectural firm. And the chancellor did his very best to, to correct that, and Ed did too. And, but once you get in, into it, it's just tough. I, I'm leaning toward an abstention on this. I'm just a little bit unusual. I mean, just conflicted about it, to tell you the truth. I, I know time is of the essence. But anyway, but John, I appreciate you bringing this. Do you have anything else to, to add to this discussion?
I'm going to say, I don't know.
The other board member.
Al, I have a question. This is Blake. With respect to the asbestos, was there no asbestos found and then all of this asbestos discovered? Or was there portions of asbestos found and then additional amounts found when they got into the work? Do we know that?
Mr. McAnally, this is, this is Ed Watley. When they did the initial survey of the building, they did not discover any material that was noticeable asbestos. Things like nine-by-nine floor tiles that the usual suspects. This asbestos in question was actually in pipe insulation, which was above the ceiling that was not accessible until after the work started. And even when, even after the work started, not all pipe insulation is, is asbestos containing. But when they got to the point of, of reviewing above the ceiling, once it was demolished, they discovered the black mastic of this pipe insulation. At that point, strongly suspected that, that they had asbestos. So I, I think to answer your question, no asbestos was discovered until I got to the demolition portion of the work.
So none, zero asbestos was discovered until we began construction?
Yes, sir. That is my understanding. Right.
In, having been in this business and practicing in this way, I tend to agree with John that a nine-by-nine vinyl tile historically always gets tested because the mastic underneath it is almost certainly ACM or asbestos-containing material if it's a nine-by-nine tile. One of the reasons the sizes of tiles changed after asbestos became a hazardous material so that people could easily distinguish what was potentially asbestos and was, was not because now we use 12-by-12 tiles. So the point, the point being made, if nothing was found upfront, I can absolutely understand that you cannot see up in a ceiling until you have removed the ceiling, shine light on it, get on a ladder, crawl up in the ceiling to be able to see ACM material. But a floor tile that you walk across, there's not much excuse for that. So I, you know, it's, it sounds like there's a combination of things that should have been found right out of the gate and then something that were discovered that were unable to be seen during construction, which is very common. If we were looking at it, however, to add to asbestos, the things that could not be seen until demolition, completely normal. The things, the fact that nothing was found to, all during the design process, floor tile wasn't found, that's horrible.
Yes, sir. Mr. McAnally, let me, let me clarify one thing, and that is there was no asbestos found during design. The, the only asbestos we found in the project was that that was discovered after the ceiling came down. So the, the floor tiles, there, there was nothing. We, we know to check that, but there was no asbestos found in those areas.
Okay. Well, and a lot of that, the obvious stuff was checked, is what I'm understanding you're saying, that contained no asbestos.
That is correct.
The things that were not obvious were, and were only found after demolition that contained asbestos were after construction. I understand clearly now.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
One last comment, like this building, again, was, original construction was 1965. Had to raise some red flags to somebody, and I'll shut up.
I appreciate that.
This is Jeff. This is Jeff. I have a comment on that, too. It's, you know, it's notorious school buildings throughout the state of Alabama has always had asbestos, either on the pipe or in other floors, like Blake's mentioning. Could you not solve this in future projects by stating who will be responsible, you know, before the contracts let?
Yes, sir, you can. And certainly I think that is something we're going to look at and, and obviously either through a procedure or a policy to, we, this.
Well, this, this is Jimmy. Let me, let me mention this because, you know, we are some months away, but we're not that far off from having the opportunity to be involved in a lot of construction. We already are, but a lot more. And we need to keep in mind how we have to deal. Yes, we have a process. We do not instruct any school and tell them who they must use. Now, I would tell you, there are some firms that I've had some bad experiences with that are on the list that I might would say, no, we're not going to use that one. Al, it probably would be the gentleman that we got into the situation down in Coastal about.
Yes, sir.
Would be one. But I'm not in the business of blacklisting architects, but we have to go through a process. And this building business doesn't just involve us. Primarily, the State Building Commission, which is not an entity as it used to be, but it's still a function of state government that we have to go through. And they have a lot of say on what we do or don't say. And then this institution, back some time ago, back prior to this board of trustees operation, had a gentleman here who was a big pusher of what they called commissioning, which was every school hired an architect, but they have to also hire a commissioner and does commissioning, they called it, to approve of what the architects do. And it, it's a conglomerate of, of, in my judgment, time delay and an overhead cost. That I think there's got to be a better way. And that's one of the items I wanted to talk at some point when we are talking probably the finance committee and the facilities committee. How do we deal with that to expedite the process? Sometimes it, it is, and Chuck, you've dealt with this a, a lot. It, it's unnecessarily slow. And in some instances, it's cost us money. And at the same time, they can override what we may do. And it's, it's a confused mess. I've talked to the governor's office about it. And they continue to go up on the fees and our cost, overhead costs on projects has continued to increase. So I think it's an issue that bears looking at across the board, not just based on this particular instance, but across the board. Is there a better way to move forward? And technically, they have to approve the contracts as well, for the architect. And all of this has moved, in my judgment, to create an environment where architects, I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to pick a fight with anybody, but they aren't as nearly obligated as they could be or should have been and were maybe 20 years ago. So I think the whole issue needs to look, be looked at. And I'm not in that alone. I know a lot of the higher ed folks, the four-year folks have the same concerns that we have. And a lot of contractors have the concerns because of delays when they're getting paid because we have to go through the state finance department, which is now houses the old commission. So there's a lot of issues in this. We, as a board of trustees, I think we need to kind of begin to review. And we, I've been talking for some time about it, but as we approach a time where I think we're going to have a lot of opportunity for capital outlay, this is a big issue.
Everybody keep in mind, the building commission and the state certifies every contractor and every architect in the state. It's not like we're willy-nilly going out and just finding somebody. They're on a list for the schools to choose from.
Any further discussion? Seeing that, I'll, I'll call question and Ms. Hively, let's do a roll call vote on this. We have a motion and a second. Change order for Sessions Hall Project and Enterprise State Community College. And if you'll call a roll vote, please, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mr. Al Thompson. Mr. John Mitchell.
Yay.
Ms. Susan Foy.
Nay.
Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods.
Nay.
I'm sorry, is that a yea or nay?
Nay.
Nay. Mrs. Crystal Brown.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Repeat the question, please.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Repeat the question.
To approve the change order for Sessions Hall Project To approve the change order for Sessions Hall project at Enterprise State Community College. And you either vote for it. Will you state that, Mr. Smith?
I approve moving forward.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have two yays and five nays.
Now, question, Mr. Chairman. The motion to approve this has been denied. What is the next step? Just stop the project?
I want to ask Mr. Watt what our options are, not parliamentary options, but what, what do you do when you run up on a situation like this, Mr. Wattley or Chancellor Baker? The board did not...
The, this is Ed. I, I think that we'll have to go back to the contractor. I believe the work was already performed, recognized we had hazardous material that we had to take out of the building. So I think the other thing we'll have to look at doing is now to deduct more items from the scope so we get the, the total project or the total change order back down below 10%. But I'm almost certain that the, the work in question to remove the asbestos has been performed. Certainly, I would never recommend leaving the asbestos there, but we can look and see what other items we can take out of the project that will reduce the project scope back down below the 10%.
Forgive me, Ed. Let me stop you there. Ms. Hibley?
Yes, sir.
Please, please go down the row and tell me, give me yes or no on each member's vote, please. Because my count didn't, didn't add up like yours did.
Okay, probably because I couldn't quite hear. Let me go over. I have Mr. Al Thompson as a yay.
Correct.
Mr. John Mitchell as a nay. Ms. Susan Foy as a nay. Mrs. Crystal Brown as nay. Mr. Chuck Smith as a yes. I'm sorry, there was a mistake there. And Mr. Blake McAnally as a yay. So it would be three yays and four nays.
You have mine incorrect. Even though I raised much hell about it, I voted yay.
Okay. That would be four and three. Four yays, three nays.
Right. So it passes?
Yes.
Very good. We'll, we'll go yes or no maybe next time because, but anyway, motion carries.
Okay. Just as a point going forward, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if one of these doesn't pass, we need to be able to have a plan on what is the next step. In my opinion, in this case, if it not had passed, we would need to stop work until we resorted the issues out, which would mean demobilizing the project, pulling the contractors off until all, everything was resolved, until the scope of work could be redefined. So moving forward, if we see a problem and we feel like it's going to not pass, we definitely need to have a backup plan on how to proceed or stop the project during construction.
I, I agree. And you can move forward on that, Mr. Smith, along with Mr. Wattley and the chancellor and your committee. But anyway, thank you, board. We'll move on to the next action item under executive legal and public information. At the request for land purchase for Bishop State Community College, this item had come, been approved by the board in March, and it's, it's had to be adjusted. And at this time, I will entertain a motion on the recommendation that the purchase be made of the DHR, Bill County DHR building at the corner of Broad and Jefferson Street by Bishop State Community College.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion with a, with a statement. University of South Alabama is shutting down the programs that we're looking at putting in this building. So yes, I would make the motion.
Chuck, hit, hit that in discussion, please. When we get to discussion, state that again.
Okay.
Second.
And second by Mr. Woods. Okay, discussion. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, the comment was, my understanding on this project, yes, something was missed, something was identified, and something was corrected. But the bottom line, University of South Alabama is shutting down the programs that are going into this building, which are three new health science programs. So the utilization of the building, from what my perspective is, it'd be well utilized and also continue to offer those services in the area.
You're, you're correct on that, Chuck. I think when I had expressed early concerns about this is that the, what we previously approved is quite a bit different from what is presented to us in the recommendation right now. And it's almost too much, it's a, it's a big mistake. It's egregious. I'm not, I'm not going to dwell on that. I'm supportive of this. I'm going to vote for it. I want to thank Chancellor Baker for the help from his staff, Ed Wattley especially, taking the lead on this and serving themselves in getting the information, most of the information that was needed to the board on this. I could see, when this was first recommended, I knew that we had desired this property and was kind of impressed with the price that we approved because it was one, one and a half acres and, and some other good things about it. And that's coming back to us in another form, but it still comes back as a decent value. And it is my hope, I'll tell you what, Ed, would you share with us about the parking situation and how you understand it to be after you discussed it with President Sykes and with their facilities manager?
Yes, sir. The building in question is intended to house three programs, three health science programs. And I believe Dr. Sykes is also on this call, and he can elaborate on that. But along with the building, we are purchasing, that there will be included in the lot, ten parking spaces, which should be sufficient for the faculty and staff to use that building. In addition to this lot, last year, Bishop State also purchased a piece of land, almost adjacent to it. And we're going to use that as the gateway for Bishop State. And in addition to the gateway entrance, we'll be able to pave a portion of that area to get room for parking spaces. So the, the parking for the students will not be directly adjacent to this, but directly.
Any questions for Mr. Wattley?
Go ahead.
The parking is not adjacent. They have to cross over. What kind of traffic is on that street that they're going to be crossing? I'm just curious.
The, the main street there is Broad Street, and Dr. Sykes, forgive me if I said the name incorrectly, but Broad Street is what runs directly in front of Bishop State. This will be a side road that will be, I believe it's Congress Street. So it's, it's, it's not a major thoroughfare. It's a side road. But we have explored, and there are places where we can put in the automated pedestrian crosswalk to allow the lights to flash there when, when a student needs to cross to or from the parking area.
I would recommend that if...
This is Reggie Sykes, if you all can hear me.
Yes, President Sykes, please.
Oh, okay. First of all, good morning, everyone. And, you know, I want to, I want to apologize for the additional time and effort you all have to spend on, on, on this. Concerning the, the parking, the parking will be off of Congress Street, and it's not, there's not heavy traffic on Congress. And also, in meeting with the Mobile County Health Department, they, they have said that when, when they are not at the Health Department, that our students can use their parking as well.
President Sykes, thank you for being on the call. I, I really appreciate you making yourself available. Blake, did you have anything that you could start and say earlier or comments?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, thank you, a question, same question about the crosswalk. You know, there's, there's not a signal at Jefferson and Congress, it appears. There is a signal at Congress and Broad. I know it's out of the way, but it's eminently more safer, more safe to cross the road at a signal. If we can put a lighted pedestrian crosswalk in, certainly that helps to get to this new parking lot. The other question I had was we, there is an estimate that's been, cost estimate that's been put together, and I noted there was some money set aside for parking lot striping, 100 spaces. I presume that's the existing parking lot adjacent to the new health programs building. But some of the information, I believe we're discussing is a new park required to be constructed north of Congress and east of Broad. Is that correct? And is that in the budget? Or is that something going to happen separately in the future?
This is, this is Reggie Sykes, this is Reggie Sykes again. The, the property that you're talking about is the property that we purchased a few months ago.
Yes.
And we will use that for parking for students. And there, there is, we have funds to, to pave and stripe parking for students there. The 10 spaces for parking at the facility, that would be parking for faculty and staff.
Okay, thank you.
President Sykes, on that list of estimated cost, there was $100,000 that Blake, I think, is referring to, and it had striping on there. But that is also for paving of the lot there at the corner of Congress and Broad.
That, that's, that's correct. That's, that's an estimate.
I think 100, I think you were forecasting, hopefully doing 100, 110 spaces there.
Right.
About that. I, I don't know how that comes down in, in preparation and everything. But I, I know you just didn't have it together until, or just didn't present that until just this week. But anyway, that's good. That was my, one of my big hangups was, was the parking. I don't want the students to be subjected to hazards and, and crossing streets can be. And I know that Congress is a site that's cross-street and don't think it's very visible. I had, if I'd known this was going on, I was just within three blocks there last week, and could have gotten a little better feel. But I, I didn't know that I'd need to take a, a site visit there. So anyway. Other comments or any questions for Mr. Wattley or President Sykes? Seeing none, we will call the question. I tell you, Mr. Wattley, for some reason I didn't pronounce, but what are there, what were there contingencies that we attached to this recommendation? I think the purchase agreement, it's already been done up, prepared. But there were some contingencies that we want to want with this?
Yes, sir. That being the, the adequate presentation or the presentation to the board of a purchase agreement, along with confirmation that we would be able to maintain access to the parking that we needed, and also an estimate of the cost to improve, to improve the building, to get it to the point that it can be used for the needed purpose of the health science programs. And let me also say that, that any project to modify the building or the parking lot for that matter, would come back to the board as a construction project to be approved by board rule or under board rule 501. But those were the items that were added to this action item.
Any further discussion? If not now, I will call the question. And we have a recommendation to purchase the, the Mobile County DHR building sitting on a revised parcel of 58 acres at the corner of Congress Street and Broad with a contingency that a purchase agreement drafted that the students have access to additional parking other than the 10 spaces there on site, and adequate parking, and that a cost estimate is presented. And at this time, we'll move to roll call vote, please. Ms. Hibley on...
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Crystal Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it passes.
Motion carries. Thank you again, President Sykes, for being available to us. I, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
See, at this time, chancellor's report?
Well, I have several items I want to talk about, and I've asked some of my staff to be prepared to do so. It's been kind of an interesting time period and functioning in a, in a different way. But I, I do want to express the appreciation to the staff across the state. As a whole, they have stepped up to the plate and I think have done an acceptable and very good job. I, I, I know it's been difficult. There are a lot of issues that we've had to deal with. We still have some issues that I don't, I don't have a good answer for. Primarily, I'll give you one example, the situation with shop, shop time, hands-on kind of experiences, clinical kinds of experiences, and one particularly unique one with this commercial driver's license. It's even hard for us. We can't give the test. We have a number of potential drivers that could be employed, but we cannot administer the test because it requires a driver and the tester to be in the same cab. And we've offered to put plexiglass between them. I had a conversation last evening with the chief of staff at the governor's office. I previously sent a letter asking for some consideration. Aleah has been to us, and many of our schools asking for consideration. And health sciences is another issue, particularly with the shortage of nurses and LPNs in the nursing homes. It's been a real difficult... It's been a real difficult situation. The Chief of Staff told me last night that he would take it into consideration and see what they could do to work something out. I hope we can make progress on that. But I've asked Boone if he would give us a quick update on the legislative activities. And it's been an interesting short session, I guess I could say. So Boone, if, Boone, are you on?
Yes, sir. Good morning to everyone. As Chancellor said, it's been a very unique time that, that we've been dealing with. And that certainly no exception was last week, the legislature meeting. Of course, they have been out of session since early March, when all of this first hit. And the leadership in the legislature made the decision to come back. The last possible day for the legislature to meet is May 18th. So they made the decision to come back last week and finish up the business that they needed to finish, which was passage of the state budgets, dealing with the public school and college authority bond issue, and passing quite a few pieces of legislation that had built up in the pile over the last couple of weeks. And so they limited the session to those items, which meant that a lot of other pieces of legislation did not pass, some of which were on the Board of Trustees legislative agenda. But I think overall, we had a pretty good session because, but what did pass was the education budget pass. Of course, the Governor's proposal had to be scaled back significantly, given the economic impacts of, of the COVID situation. But we put some year-over-year boost in the budget of around $91 million. The community college system was able to get a little over 11 million of those increased funds. And we had good conversation with the budget chairs. And the result, I believe, was we were able to get the increased funds in the areas that needed, was needed the most. First and foremost, the majority of those funds were put into College OEM, which is, of course, as you know, the funds that will be distributed out directly to the colleges. And I know they're, they will be appreciative of those funds and what they're having to do to respond to, to the COVID situation. We also saw increases of $1 million in our present education appropriation, which continues to be ever, ever important with trying to reduce capitalism. And lastly, we got over a $4 million increase in our dual enrollment program, which, as you know, continues to grow and grow. So that will help us keep up with, with demand. So we're very pleased with where that stood. Also very pleased, as the Chancellor mentioned, that the legislature did give final passage to the public school and college authority bond issue. The total amount that was included in the version that passed was 1.25 billion. And the community college system received over 120 million of those funds. So we did pretty well there. And that will help in the future with a lot of our capital needs. The, the session is not over as of yet. The legislature is still going to come back next Monday and, and take care of a few, a few additional matters before they adjourn for the year. But really, everything that, that we were tracking has pretty well passed. So I don't expect anything else that would, that will be brought up that would have an impact on the community college system. It's very likely that the legislature will come back at some point later in the year. It could be one special session. I'm hearing possibility of multiple special sessions. Once there's a better graph, the economic impact that this has caused on the state. There could be additional money that's appropriated in the future. But at least we've got kind of a baseline that our, that our colleges can plan around. That's kind of, that's kind of where we stand. Like I said, overall, given the circumstances, I felt like we came out of the session pretty good.
Uh, Boone? Boone?
Yes, sir.
Doctor, go ahead and mention the tech, the deferred maintenance tech fund.
Yes, sir. So in addition to everything I've mentioned, there's also some additional money that the legislature appropriated from the Advancement and Technology Fund. Basically, they, what that is, is, is the over month that they've been setting aside in an account that can be upgraded for specific things like technology purchases. In fact, in the past, we, we've been able to fund the ERP project primarily with those funds that have been appropriated in the past few years. Also, those funds can be used for deferred maintenance projects. Not new construction, but if there's deferred maintenance, those funds can be used as well. And we, we were appropriated a little over $23 million for the system in those funds as well. So that can also be utilized for, for projects down the road as well.
Let me follow up on that a little. Let me follow up on that a little bit. Because we're sitting here with 120 million. I do not know when they plan to sell the bonds. They're in a good market to sell it. And it's going to require considerable time to work through all of this. But it's a great opportunity. It's an opportunity to make some significant improvements in the system. I am not responding to any of the requests. I have no commitments in this process, which is kind of unusual. I committed to the Governor's Office early on. If they would leave it up to the Board of Trustees, then I was not going to make any commitments either. And that's where we are. I've had some conversations with the Finance Committee. I've had some conversation with the facility. I am meeting with the President's next two days. But my meeting with them is just to talk about some future things. But the immediate thing is I'm going to ask each president to come forward and show us a plan, a detailed plan that is an education plan, and do some thinking about where this school needs to be in the next five and 10 years. I want the projects to support that kind of approach instead of just building a building, just building a nice building. And I'm not, I'm, I'm supportive of good buildings. But I want to address the issue of the education programs first. So I'm going to start that process next Tuesday. But in the meantime, I'll need to be meeting with the Finance Committee, the Facilities Committee, and then keeping the rest of the board, all of the board informed on progress that we're making. But I see this as a major time to make a major play in improving the community college system across the state. And there are a lot of issues that we need to deal with. We have a number of schools that we need to be in the market pretty quick in terms of doing some refinancing, then taking advantages of the savings. And we're monitoring that on a daily basis. We finally priced the, the refinancing that we've been working on and, and the additional financing on the project up at Calhoun. And it came in at 3.18, I believe, was the interest rate. But I think we're in the market at a good time. So I'm going to be asking you to spend a lot of time over the next two, three months in looking at and doing some planning about the future. I think it's a great opportunity, and I want to make sure we do the best job we can. Issues about that at this point. If not, I want to move on. I, I sent a package. You should have received the package dealing with the CARES Act. But I thought it would be helpful, and I've asked Sarah Calhoun to come in and make a, a kind of a short discussion or lead a discussion or talk about the CARES Act and the programs. So Sarah, if you would do so.
Good morning, everyone. So we have received significant funding through the Department of Education as a result of the COVID-19 impact that, that has come across our nation. And the majority of these funds are, the, the interest of these funds are student-based. And the first half of the initial allocation to the colleges are moving out to the students as we speak. We have a significant number of colleges that have completed their student plans. They are beginning to issue those, those awards to the students currently. And that total is over $27 million going directly to our students that were impacted from the COVID-19 epidemic. The balance of that first awarding of funds are institutional dollars. Again, that's another $27.7 million that are, that are at our colleges and they have access to. We are in the process of releasing guidance on those institutional dollars. There, there is specific things that they can spend the funds for. Again, Department of Education has awarded these funds for student support. And the institutional portion of these funds can go towards direct student awards, like the first half could. But they can also go towards other institutional improvements that could, that will be a direct benefit to the students. And they're highlighting distance learning in that guidance. And I hope I'm not speaking out of turn on this. But the Chancellor is interested in utilizing a portion of these funds system-wide for a distance learning initiative that includes a system learning management, system-wide learning management software, proctoring software, and tutoring software that will be a direct benefit to our students at a distance learning level moving from this point forward. So we will be providing guidance regarding, regarding these funds to the colleges today. We will also be administering RFPs for these systems moving forward. But we would like to implement this process very, very expeditionsively. So we plan on the RFPs to be due by June 10th from, for the majority of these initiatives. And a rollout to the system very quickly thereafter. Because we want these dollars to truly be an impact and an improvement to our colleges for our students.
HBCU.
Okay, the next set of funding coming out are the HBCU funds. Again, awarded through Department of Education. There is over $21 million that, that have been awarded to our schools for HBCU funding. And then an additional $2 million awarded to a portion of the schools for strengthening and supplemental programs. We do not have direct guidance from Department of Education on these particular funds just yet. So we are, we are holding off for a little while on the guidance regarding the HBCU strengthening and supplemental funds. But if they lead along the same path that they have with their other funds, we anticipate them to be directed towards direct student awards and improvement with instructional services in a distance learning environment, is, is our assumption with the balance of these funds.
Okay.
I, I might add that in, in, from the beginning, I think the mission that was pushed by the U.S. Department of Education was to get the money out there. And oftentimes, we were struggling trying to get some direction about rules, what the rules were. And sometimes we just kind of had to guess, maybe come back and follow up. And so far, we feel comfortable that we're in a position of managing it appropriately. But it has been kind of a rushed deal, and they've been pushing hard to get the money out in circulation. But I think our schools are going to be in a good position to take a lot of advantages and utilization of the money. And I, I was just thinking, when I was kind of deciding what else I wanted to talk about. Blake, you remember, you and Crystal remember the day that we were headed for a meeting with the Chairman of the Budget Committee in the Senate at Crystal's office, actually, I believe. And we were trying to figure out exactly what did we, what do we want to request? And we decided to deal with distance learning because it is a major issue. And so we've been working on that. And the Chairman of the Budget Committee in the Senate put money in our budget to deal with that and establish a statewide program. Chris Alexander is with us in my office this morning. Chris has been working on this project for some year plus, almost year and a half, probably. And I've asked him to kind of briefly talk about where we are headed or where we want to go and we fully intend to go. And we are fortunate in that the Chairman of the Budget Committee, even the Chairman of the Budget Committee in the House started the budget there. And they included the money for distance learning. And I think what has happened over the last couple of months has demonstrated a need for some sophistication in the whole process. We, I felt that we were better prepared than we would have been two years ago. I know that. But still, we aren't where we were to be. And I think there's a great amount of opportunity in this state to utilize distance learning for a lot of things. So I'm going to ask Chris if he will talk for a few minutes and kind of give a quick overview of where we want to go.
Thank you, Chancellor, and good morning, board members. With this, the, the COVID-19 pandemic and so forth, so the ACCS Distance Learning Initiative or ACCS Online, some of the initial components that I believe we need to address, and Sarah Calhoun kind of mentioned some of that in her conversation. And that is the release of RFPs to address a singular learning management system, online proctoring, and online tutoring. We recently partnered with a company called Quality Matters to begin to look at reviewing our online course offerings as well as our hybrid course offerings in terms of the quality of that. So we were, we're initially starting that. Another component that comes as an initial piece to this is the creation of MOOCs. And MOOC is stands for Massive Open Online Content or online courses. And I'm really excited about getting this piece off the ground because we can create these, put them out to not just our students, but to the people of Alabama. So those prospective students, those individuals that may be doing a career change, being retooled, and they may not have the confidence to, to come, to come back to higher ed, to come back to a community college. We can provide these resources to them free of charge, no hook, no nothing, other than their time and, and their investment in this so that they can brush up their skills at their pace. And in turn, we hope that that nudges them to say, you know what, I can do this. I can get this degree through developmental remedial math and, and English, reading and writing. But then also take it to another level of MOOCs geared toward specific college programs. Again, not to take away from the program. This is not driving additional credit hours or, or driving more funding by the student. Again, these are free. But I kind of coin it as a, as a signature golf hole on a golf course. In that golf course market, they typically put their signature hole on the market so you can see how challenging the hole is or the overall golf course is. And that's what I kind of want to do with the MOOCs, with the programs, is let spotlight per college, some of the good things that are going on with the programs, allow these individuals to come in and complete those prior to enrollment so that they can get a better gauge on whether or not that program works for them. We see a lot of times that student retention, success, and completion, students who come in at the developmental or remedial level, they struggle to get to the completion of that degree. The same thing is said when you have individuals who sign up for a program and they think that's what they want, they get halfway through and they realize this is not what they want. By us being able to put something in front of them to help them gauge what that program consists of, other than just a conversation between them and the advisor or an instructor, I think it's going to make a huge impact. And again, this will be, these open courses would be developed and presented through the colleges. And then with the, with the push for a single learning management system, I think that provides tools for our faculty to be better prepared, to give them the things that they need to be successful in course development. And with the online proctoring and tutoring, you know, when you talk to SAC C O C, one of the big things that they look at when you're talking online is they ask for two things. Are you providing the same services to your online students that you are to your face-to-face students? And how do you ensure, how are you ensuring that the student is who they say they are? So, when we have an online course about providing online tutoring, that is the same type of tutoring that the face-to-face students have when they're on campus. So, these are things that are needed during the COVID-19. The proctoring was a big piece. A lot of our colleges were scrambling, trying to figure out what that tool was going to be. So, I think this is the perfect timing to introduce these singular applications.
Any questions?
I'd just say it's prophetic that we chose to pursue this and spend money on it now because all that has happened, I think it absolutely demonstrates the reason that we need to perfect this delivery mode.
Let me go ahead. Susan, Susan, are you on?
She's muted. She's on, but she's not commuted.
Yeah, okay. I've asked Susan if she will kind of give a quick update because, you know, we've had to go through what is, what are the rules that we can operate under or not operate with, or how do we move forward? How do we plan to do what we're now doing? And then how do we plan to function going forward? So, if, with that, Susan, if you take a minute or two or three.
Good morning, everybody. As Chancellor Baker said, I'd like to give a brief update on what we stand today in terms of college operations. It's been five weeks since the chancellor's last line-up call to me, and in many ways, it feels, it's so much. And I think that's because the system and college personnel have been working around the clock to respond to evolving environmental conditions, adjust to online and alternative delivery of education and training, and frankly, to absorb the tremendous amount of guidance that's been coming out in Washington, various health agencies, as well as the left groups, the updates, the governor's office, all of which have had time to.
Sorry to interrupt. The audio quality is very distorted. Do you mind calling in on the phone number that was in the meeting invite? So, I believe we'll be able to understand you. We hear very garbled, very distorted speech.
Okay.
Azrael, will you unmute her computer?
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, now try.
She may not be on it.
Oh.
She's going to enter the code and all that stuff.
Sorry for the problem, guys. There was an internet router that went down. That's a backbone router that provides service to Alabama, Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, and it's causing internet slowdowns all over the southeast today. So, we're not the only ones struggling with the quality of audio or video going out over the internet, but it is a, sometimes we think perhaps you can.
Can you hear me now?
Loud and clear.
Okay. Now, I'm getting a lot of background.
Turn down the volume on your computer all the way.
I have. Oh, my God. Nothing worse than hearing your voice in echo.
There we go.
Is that better? No.
Are you on, Susan?
I currently have her muted. Azrael is actually going to her office to see what the issue is. She'll be back with us shortly.
I guess I could go ahead, but I may not be on. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You're loud and clear. The only person muted currently is Ms. Price.
Chancellor, if we can resolve this, we might get, and I don't mind waiting longer. We'll go in, we can go in the work session and you come back. It's going to be an extended period of time. I don't mind waiting a few minutes, for sure. But that option is open.
We could go ahead with work. Hello? Why don't we do that, Mr. Chairman?
Also, I made a mistake and I skipped. We had added committee reports to the agenda and I skipped that. Are there any reports from the committee chairs, Mr. Smith, Mr. McAnally, Ms. Brown?
Not at this time, Al. Nothing for me. Nothing now.
And Ms. Brown, I think will have something for us at the work session, if that's okay.
Thanks.
Is Susan back yet?
No.
If not, we'll go ahead.
Yeah.
Once again, board members, chancellor staff, thank you for what you've done to put this meeting together. Azrael, everybody involved, forgive me for overlooking and omitting any names, but this is all worked extremely well under the circumstances. And we'll go into the work session once we have adjournment. And then our next board of trustees meeting will be June 10th, 2020, and we will see we'll meet remotely. Board members, do you have any other comments or anything else? Seeing none at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Their second. All who's in favor say aye. Opposed, no, we stand adjourned. Okay, now we'll go into the work session and give the members just a second if they want to pull up the, their agenda or anything they need to go into. At the beginning of this, we'll have the, we have the first three items under executive. We have the, we have three mission statements. The first is the.
Mr. Thompson, I hate to interrupt. We've got the issue resolved with Ms. Price, if you'd like to.
I think if it's okay, if there's no objection to the board, Susan, you may continue. We're in work session now. You go right ahead, please.
Thank you, and I'm really sorry about that, everyone. So, what I'd like to do is just give you an update on where we stand today in terms of college operations. It's felt a bit longer than five weeks, and that's just because we've all been working so hard behind the scenes with our environmental conditions, transitioning to online and alternative delivery of education, and frankly, just trying to absorb all of the information that we've received from various sources. The term "normal business hours" just doesn't apply anymore. So, to keep you abreast, I hope you have been receiving the information that we've sent from the governor's office as well as the guidance we provided to the colleges. We sent you the most recent guidance from Governor Ivy that was issued last week, which extends the Safer at Home Directive through May 22nd. Regarding our colleges' operational, I'm sorry, instructional operations, nothing has changed. We cannot provide in-person instruction, at least through the 22nd of May, and our colleges do remain closed to the public through that date. At the same time, our colleges have been transitioning some of their personnel back to their physical offices while observing social distancing and following guidance issued by the Department of Health. Consistent with Chancellor Baker's memo and the governor's memo, colleges have also continued to be flexible with work schedule and telework wherever it's feasible. We've left the decisions to, as to when and how and who to transition back to the physical sites at the colleges to the judgment of the local president. And really, as they've returned more and more employees to the physical environment, they've been very mindful of erring on the side of caution and taking as many precautions as possible to create a safe environment for employees. As you all know, we transitioned to online and alternative delivery of instruction back in March. Almost around the same time, our colleges began developing plans for the continuation of online courses through the end of the spring semester and into the summer term. For general education classes, the good news is that colleges have been able to manage that transition pretty well. Unfortunately, as was mentioned earlier by Chancellor Baker, the strictly online requirement has posed some problems for students who need to complete lab work, clinicals, and practicum for courses. And that includes most of our CTE and workforce training courses like welding, aviation, and our health programs. Recently, we received some promising news that the Board of Nursing will allow nursing programs to maximize flexibility while meeting accreditation standards. And that means colleges will be able to meet their clinical objections through, objectives, excuse me, through a combination of live encounters, virtual encounters, and/or campus simulations. And that's really due to the amazing efforts of our Director of Health Programs, Kenneth Kirkland, who worked very closely and very hard with the Board of Nursing to help bring about this change. In areas where we don't have the ability to complete CTE courses online, colleges have developed contingency plans for CTE and workforce students, with most plans anticipating late May through July as a time period when they can bring students back to campuses and sites to complete those labs and practicums. This is extremely important for us because for those students, many of those students, this is the last course that they need to complete a program and enter the workforce. Now, at the same time they were developing the plans for the summer term, for the contingency plan for CTE labs, colleges were also working on expanding their safety plan to include precautionary measures to protect employees and students once they are able to return to college. And in fact, many of our colleges have already begun implementing those measures. So, today, we are moving forward with online summer classes. And by the way, many schools are either holding their own in terms of enrollment or actually have experienced increased enrollment for the summer term, which is great. But as you might imagine, we're really anxious to provide that opportunity for CTE and workforce students to complete spring courses and continue with summer courses. This is not something that we are just pushing for, for ourselves. In some areas of the state, colleges are receiving requests from students, from instructors, from the business sector, really asking us, when can we open those labs so that students can complete their programs and can be ready for work? For instance, a number of our clinical agencies are reaching out to our college health programs to discuss returning to clinicals and preceptorships. As Chancellor Baker mentioned a little bit earlier, we have been in constant contact with the governor's office in response to a request from the governor's office, in fact, last month, who did offer some suggestions as to how we could perform labs and practicums in certain programs such as commercial truck driving and aviation. Our suggestions were focused on implementing safe environmental protocols through which we could instruct students. Our understanding, as Chancellor Baker just mentioned, is the governor's office is considering those suggestions. We had kind of hoped that they would have been incorporated in her order last week, but they weren't. And quite honestly, you know, I just have to say, we believe that we've developed a way to complete truck driving instruction in an environment that is at least as safe, if not more so, than the environment of a barber shop or a beauty salon. But as he mentioned, Chancellor Baker has sent a letter to the governor's office. We await the governor's decision on this issue as well as her guidance regarding post-May 22. As for the fall, we are moving forward with plans to open our doors, obviously subject to the guidance and directives issued by the governor. One thing I also want to mention is that this has been a period of time of robust professional development. Despite what just happened a few minutes ago, we have become experts in Zoom. And so, we have been able to conduct a lot of training. We've had lots of conversation, lots of really good workshops, both internally as well as being able to provide our employees an opportunity to attend virtual conferences. So, that's all been really, really positive. Just turning for a second to the system office, employees have been working remotely since March, and we've begun transitioning them back to the office, allowing for some flexible work schedules and encouraging increased presence throughout the month of May. So, we too are following social distancing practices. We've worked with RSA to intensify cleaning efforts in the building. We've also placed sanitizers on the floors. We have face masks and bottles of sanitizing rinse available for all of our employees. And assuming Governor Ivy will continue to lift these restrictions, our current plan is for employees to resume their work in the office and return to normal business hours on June 2nd. So, what I've just tried to do is provide you with a snapshot of where we are today. What I haven't talked about are the hundreds of hours of work by college personnel as well as system office staff to wade through the various employee logistical and instructional related issues in order to safely keep our colleges running. And we also forget sometimes in the midst of our work that our colleges are families too. So, I haven't shared with you the stories of the human kindness, selflessness, giving, professionalism, and heroism that have occurred at every college on all levels. The stories are very real and they're very abundant. Every college has been and continues to be touched personally by this virus. We continue to receive reports of positive tests of employees and students and members of their families. And last month, we were really saddened to hear of the death of a part-time employee who had contracted the virus. who had contracted the virus. That sobered and humbled us and drove home the seriousness of these circumstances. But we've also been able to cheer for family and friends and coworkers who have recovered. I just want to let you know the thoughtful work and the patience and the cooperation have been tremendous. So that really does end my two-minute report, and I just want to let you know that we'll continue to update you, and we just look forward to brighter and better reports in the future. That's it for me.
Thank you, Susan. Mr. Chairman, could I take one more minute?
Please, please.
And I, because I think it would be remiss if I didn't bring this up then. I believe I'm correct that we now have every one of our colleges on banner as far as registering students. Am I close?
Close. Um, uh, well, um, honestly, two years and two days ago, we signed an agreement with the Louisiana move board, so we're, we've made a lot of progress in the two years, but right, everyone is able to work with financial aid.
That's it, okay.
So the nine cohort one schools are doing full, using the full suite of products. The 15 cohort two schools are using, with the exception of SINK, because there's mandatory acceptance of that process is, is coming along by July.
Okay.
We're close, we're right, we're right there.
I, I might be a little ahead, but I, I like to think ahead and I, I'd be so excited when we do get to that point. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Chancellor?
That's, that's it.
Susan Price, thank you for, uh, the concise and, uh, but nonetheless fairly detailed overview that you gave and, uh, you know, you sharing that with us, it just, just reminds those of us on the board that are, that are removed, uh, from day to day. You know, a lot has gone into, to continue to keep things going and the board appreciates it very, very much.
Thank you.
We, we will, uh, begin the agenda, and, uh, the first item is the, uh, review and approval of a mission statement from, uh, Trenton State Community College. David, you jump right in if there's anything you need to add to any of these, uh, and then, uh, board members, comments, uh, that, Ms. Brown, does this look okay, are these looking okay from a policy standpoint?
Your admission statements?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, I'm not putting you on the spot, but nothing comes to mind right now, I guess, for-
No. I think they all state the same.
Item two, uh, the, uh, review and approval of the mission statement for Southern Union State Community College. Item three, review and approval of the mission statement for Bevill State Community College. We'll go into legal, uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, sir. Good morning, uh, to you all. The first item under the, uh, legal heading is Southern Union's request for approval of its renewal of its bookstore operation agreement with Barnes &amp; Noble. 2015, the college entered into after bid, uh, a, a, a agreement with Barnes &amp; Noble for the operation of its bookstore. That agreement included an option to renew for an additional five years. The parties have agreed to, uh, exercise that option and are requesting approval from the board for, uh, an additional five years. The college receives a commission of 14.1% for all gross sales up to $2 billion and a grow, and a commission of 15.1% on gross sales above $2 billion. College also receives 7% on gross sales of digital course materials and receives e- each year a $2,000 textbook scholarships to be used at the discretion of the college. The only addition to the agreement, uh, is to add an indemnity provision in favor of the college, the Alabama Community College System, and the Board of Trustees. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item? Mr. Chairman, would you like for me to move to the next item?
Yes, please.
The next item, uh, is a request, uh, for the approval of a revision or addition to the Board of Trustees bylaws. This new, uh, section of the bylaws deals with the removal of board members, and the, uh, material language, uh, of the new section comes directly from the, uh, enabling statute for the Board of Trustees, in particular, Alabama Code Section 16-60-111 Subparagraph J. The addition would be, a board member may be removed for immorality, misconduct, office incompetency, or willful neglect of duty in accordance with Alabama Code Section 16-60-111 Subparagraph J. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item?
David, uh, Ms., I recognize Ms. Brown, uh, Chair of the Policy Committee.
Yes, Chairman Thompson. After the Policy Committee had an opportunity to go back through Dr. Willen's, um, January 8th Board Presentation and the verbiage from our statute, we recognized that we were , um, not in compliance on our board bylaws, and so we, um, discovered that we were missing this provision in our bylaws, so recommending this amendment just to be in compliance, and we thank David for drafting the, uh, proposed revision for us. That will, um, get us into compliance.
Mr. Chairman, would you want me to move on?
Yes, please.
The final item on the work session agenda, uh, is another, uh, revision to the Board of Trustees bylaws, in particular, section Roman numeral eight, A, paragraphs two and three. This revision would replace the word "president" with the phrase "presiding officer." Uh, this is a, uh, curative revision to make these paragraphs consistent with previous amendments to the bylaws. Are there any questions regarding this proposed revision?
I would just remind the board that the changes were made in just, uh, titles, uh, for the, uh, Chair and Vice Chair. And this was done, uh, with, uh, Roger Bates and the, uh, governor's legal staff some time ago, and, uh, this was just, uh, evidently, uh, was missed, overlooked. So anyway, that, uh, in, if we're in error, please let us know, but I, I've had that fearful pair of eyes looking at it, and it appears to be correct. Uh, Ms. Brown, do you have any other comments?
Chairman Thompson, again, just after reviewing the bylaws, the Policy Committee, uh, which is Susan, Matt, and myself, are recommending this, um, revision just to be consistent with the other, um, titles in the bylaws.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, I think that's it in the work session. Any, anything else from the board members? On this chancellor?
No.
You have anything else saying?
No.
Uh, board, I, I just want to encourage you to, uh, to communicate with myself and Vice Chair, uh, Milton Davis, uh, about, uh, going forward, about, uh, how we will conduct, uh, the, the next board meeting and, and those thereafter, and just kind of playing things by ear and want to err on the side of, of safety. In regard to, to meetings, we, we saw how they did in the legislature and, uh, for committee meetings, and, uh, if we might could place some of those, uh, protections and, uh, in place, then, uh, maybe we can meet, uh, before long, but I think it, it's something at the top of my list, uh, just to keep, keep on top of, and we just, like I say, we don't want to jeopardize anyone at all, uh, staff, board members, uh, employees of any type or whatever, so, uh, this seems to work well. Board, am I missing anything? Anything else y'all have?
Al, I got, I've got a question back, uh, to the, to what Crystal said that we were on the, on the, matching the, the, the code from the state of Alabama. Are you saying that we were in violation of the code? Out of compliance with the code? Or is just this duplication to get the code into our bylaws?
Now, this, this is, this is, as she said, uh, if you looked at, if you, Dr. Willen said that, of course, we had, uh, uh, provisions for removal of a board member in our bylaws when she made her presentation, and we did not. This is to basically put us in compliance with SACS.
Okay, this is compliance with SACS, not the state of Alabama.
Like the, the, the statute, uh, legislation speaks for itself, and it takes precedent over our bylaws, but this is just kind of somewhat joining the two, but also it puts our, at least based on her remarks, puts us in compliance with SACS. And we checked some other Board of Trustees bylaws and, and they basically mirrored, uh, this type of action.
I just want to make sure that, that we're understanding is we were not out of compliance with the state code.
No, sir.
But SACS wanted us to put it in our bylaws.
They, they didn't ask us, we just were proactive once we heard her presentation.
Okay.
Doug, if you go back to slide 26, I believe, of her presentation, um, when you, when you get an opportunity, it speaks to that, and that's what I was referencing when I said compliant. Sorry for the confusion.
No, that's okay, because nothing we put in our bylaws overrides state code. I just want to make sure that was-
That's right, we don't, we-
Okay.
We're like, we're just marrying the two, so, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, board? If not, we will, uh, we'll stand adjourned and, uh, hope everybody continues to be safe and healthy. Thank you for your participation, and thanks again to Chancellor, to your staff, and you, and everything's been done to, uh, do so much, uh, during this pandemic.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank y'all, be safe.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you.